Okay, good evening again, everyone. Thank you for your patience. So today is Thursday, May 4th, and we are at Duggan School for the Board of Ed's Workshop. We are going to start with a silent prayer. Doctor, do you have any remembrances for tonight?
Not for tonight, Commissioner.
Okay, moment of silent prayer. And next on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, and we have the Duggan Student Council to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have said any pledge.
I pledge to be a Duggan School dragon.
I pledge to be a Duggan School dragon.
As a Duggan School dragon, I promise to...
As a Duggan School dragon, I promise to...
Do my best.
Do my best.
Respect myself and others.
Respect myself and others.
Always be polite.
Always be polite.
Give a helping hand.
Give a helping hand.
Obey all school rules.
Obey all school rules.
And never give up.
And never give up.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we are going to move a little out of order. We're here, we're going to go to the principal's report.
Good evening, President Sweeney. I know Vice President is not here yet. Secretary Serrano Adorno, commissioners, student representatives, and Dr. Ruffin. I am Melissa G. Giovanni, and I am the principal of Duggan School, and I would like to welcome you all. This is our, we're about to complete our 11th year, so we're really excited to have you here. I would like to thank and introduce to you our student council representatives who did an excellent job leading the tours today. We have Deanna Person, Gabe Lacy, Luz Maria Rivera, Melody Hanero, Leslie Buston Morecho, and Ms. Kiana Carter. Thank you. I would also like that our Duggan staff members who are here tonight can wave. They are always going above and beyond.
Please stand.
For our families and our students. And I would also like to thank my family members that are here with us tonight. Thank you. And finally, I would like to introduce you to Mrs. Carla Farianza, who has been instrumental in the success and safety of our students, and I do not know what I would do without her, so thank you.
It's easy.
So if I could draw your attention to the projections screen, and Mr. Jose, if you could go to the next slide. We like to do a lot of celebrating here at Duggan. This is a little bit about how we embrace... ...our Orange Day for United Way. We raised thousands of dollars for some of these different establishments. We also celebrated Black History Month this month with a project, You Could Change the World with Your Words, and this was once again all guided by our students. We celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month with a little music madness competition, and our families and parents got to get involved in that, so that was really exciting. And Duggan Multicultural Day. Next slide, please, Jose. We are proud to be one of the community schools. We have the Boost program here at Duggan, so we have a great partnership with Waterbury Bridge to Success. These are some of the many things that we have done this year. We had a Cooking Matters class where we actually had families cook together. So parents, grandmas, aunts, uncles, all came, they cooked meals, they had a really good time, and they brought some groceries home to cook some more meals, so that was really exciting. We also have Porter's House. Ms. Kiana there, you could see her up in the right corner, she is here for mediation, she does a lot of prevention if students just need a break or need to talk some things through. She is here for them, and they love her, and we've seen a lot of great success with that program. On the bottom left, you can see Science of Sound. We actually have some DJs in the house here. They got to learn some DJing skills, and one of them actually won a turntable in the turntable contest, so that was pretty exciting. And one of my favorites this year, Vision to Learn came. Every child was screened, and we brought the exams right to them. We have about 140 students that received new glasses, or their prescriptions might have been changed, or they might have been referred for some things that we might not have picked up, so that was really great. And I think some of our kids are sporting their glasses. Next slide, please. So this is a little bit more of our celebrating. We had our English learners take some of the tests this year, and they had a little ice cream party. We, on the upper right-hand corner, we take place in the I Ready and M Classic Testing, and middle of the year, these kids partied because they either were proficient or above, or they made really great groups. So they were excited, they got to parade around, we did a little conga line. On the bottom left, you could see that was one of our PBIS events for positive behavior. We have monthly celebrations for middle school students and our elementary school students, and those were actually our middle school students. They did some pumpkin painting, and they were very creative in that, and so those are some of our winners. And our event on the lower right-hand corner, that is the student council, they wanted a Spirit Week, so we got a Spirit Week, and we had Dress Up Day, Green Day, 80s/90s Day, Crazy Hair Day, and Duggan Pride. So that was really exciting. So these are some of the great things that we've been doing here, and if any of you have any questions for me, I am available for those questions, as well as my student council, they will be more than happy to ask any questions or answer any questions for you.
Commissioner Roushaw.
I just, this thing out. Hello. First of all, I just want to, I was on the tours today, I just wanted to thank the student council, they did a fantastic job, and if this is our future, we're in pretty good shape. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. It was a great tour, and kids are very knowledgeable about their surroundings, so it's good to see, and the school looks great. School looks great.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a special presentation. We have the members of our state champions, the Waterbury Career Academy Basketball Team here tonight, so that we can applaud them for their great accomplishments. Dr. Ruffin?
At this time... At this time, Coach, I would like for you to come forward with your players, and please say a few words to the board. We are all so incredibly proud...
Thank you.
...of our students and our families. And I would also like to thank my family members that are here with us tonight. Thank you. And finally, I would like to introduce you to Mrs. Carla Farianza, who has been instrumental in the success and safety of our students, and I do not know what I would do without her, so thank you.
It's easy.
So if I could draw your attention to the projections screen, and Mr. Jose, if you could go to the next slide. We like to do a lot of celebrating here at Duggan. This is a little bit about how we embrace... ...our Orange Day for United Way. We raised thousands of dollars for some of these different establishments. We also celebrated Black History Month this month with a project, You Could Change the World with Your Words, and this was once again all guided by our students. We celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month with a little music madness competition, and our families and parents got to get involved in that, so that was really exciting. And Duggan Multicultural Day. Next slide, please, Jose. We are proud to be one of the community schools. We have the Boost program here at Duggan, so we have a great partnership with Waterbury Bridge to Success. These are some of the many things that we have done this year. We had a Cooking Matters class where we actually had families cook together. So parents, grandmas, aunts, uncles, all came, they cooked meals, they had a really good time, and they brought some groceries home to cook some more meals, so that was really exciting. We also have Porter's House. Ms. Kiana there, you could see her up in the right corner, she is here for mediation, she does a lot of prevention if students just need a break or need to talk some things through. She is here for them, and they love her, and we've seen a lot of great success with that program. On the bottom left, you can see Science of Sound. We actually have some DJs in the house here. They got to learn some DJing skills, and one of them actually won a turntable in the turntable contest, so that was pretty exciting. And one of my favorites this year, Vision to Learn came. Every child was screened, and we brought the exams right to them. We have about 140 students that received new glasses, or their prescriptions might have been changed, or they might have been referred for some things that we might not have picked up, so that was really great. And I think some of our kids are sporting their glasses. Next slide, please. So this is a little bit more of our celebrating. We had our English learners take some of the tests this year, and they had a little ice cream party. We, on the upper right-hand corner, we take place in the I Ready and M Classic Testing, and middle of the year, these kids partied because they either were proficient or above, or they made really great groups. So they were excited, they got to parade around, we did a little conga line. On the bottom left, you could see that was one of our PBIS events for positive behavior. We have monthly celebrations for middle school students and our elementary school students, and those were actually our middle school students. They did some pumpkin painting, and they were very creative in that, and so those are some of our winners. And our event on the lower right-hand corner, that is the student council, they wanted a Spirit Week, so we got a Spirit Week, and we had Dress Up Day, Green Day, 80s/90s Day, Crazy Hair Day, and Duggan Pride. So that was really exciting. So these are some of the great things that we've been doing here, and if any of you have any questions for me, I am available for those questions, as well as my student council, they will be more than happy to ask any questions or answer any questions for you.
Commissioner Roushaw.
I just, this thing out. Hello. First of all, I just want to, I was on the tours today, I just wanted to thank the student council, they did a fantastic job, and if this is our future, we're in pretty good shape. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. It was a great tour, and kids are very knowledgeable about their surroundings, so it's good to see, and the school looks great. School looks great.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a special presentation. We have the members of our state champions, the Waterbury Career Academy Basketball Team here tonight, so that we can applaud them for their great accomplishments. Dr. Ruffin?
At this time... At this time, Coach, I would like for you to come forward with your players, and please say a few words to the board. We are all so incredibly proud...
Okay, good evening again, everyone. Thank you for your patience. So today is Thursday, May 4th, and we are at Duggan School for the Board of Ed's workshop. We are going to start with a silent prayer. Doctor, do you have any remembrances for tonight?
Not for tonight, Commissioner.
Moment of silent prayer. And next on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, and we have the Duggan Student Council to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have said any pledge.
I pledge to be a Duggan School dragon.
I pledge to be a Duggan School dragon.
As a Duggan School dragon, I promise to
As a Duggan School dragon, I promise to
Do my best
Do my best
Respect myself and others
Respect myself and others
Always be polite
Always be polite
Give a helping hand
Give a helping hand
Obey all school rules
Obey all school rules
And never give up
And never give up. Thank you very much. Okay, next we are going to move a little out of order. We're here, we're going to go to the principal's report.
Good evening, President Sweeney. I know Vice President is not here yet, Secretary Serrano Adorno, commissioners, student representatives, and Dr. Ruffin. I am Melissa G. Giovanni, and I am the principal of Duggan School, and I would like to welcome you all. This is our, we're about to complete our 11th year, so we're really excited to have you here. I would like to thank and introduce to you our student council representatives, who did an excellent job leading the tours today. We have Deanna Person, Gabe Lacy, Luz Maria Rivera, Melody Hanero, Leslie Buston Morecho, and Ms. Kiana Carter. Thank you. I would also like that our Duggan staff members who are here tonight can wave. They are always going above and beyond
Please stand.
And our students. And I would also like to thank my family members that are here with us tonight. Thank you. And finally, I would like to introduce you to Mrs. Carla Farienza, who has been instrumental in the success and safety of our students, and I do not know what I would do without her, so thank you. So if I could draw your attention to the projection screen, and Mr. Jose, if you could go to the next slide. We like to do a lot of celebrating here at Duggan. This is a little bit about how we embrace our Orange Day for United Way. We raised thousands of dollars for some of these different establishments. We also celebrated Black History Month this month with a project, You Could Change the World with Your Words, and this was once again all guided by our students. We celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month with a little Music Madness competition, and our families and parents got to get involved in that, so that was really exciting. And Duggan Multicultural Day. Next slide, please, Jose. We are proud to be one of the community schools. We have the Boost Program here at Duggan, so we have a great partnership with Waterbury Bridge to Success. These are some of the many things that we have done this year. We had a Cooking Matters class where we actually had families cook together. So parents, grandmas, aunts, uncles, all came. They cooked meals. They had a really good time, and they brought some groceries home to cook some more meals, so that was really exciting. We also have Porter's House. Ms. Kiana there, you could see her up in the right corner. She is here for mediation. She does a lot of prevention if students just need a break or need to talk some things through. She is here for them, and they love her, and we've seen a lot of great success with that program. On the bottom left, you can see Science of Sound. We actually have some DJs in the house here. They got to learn some DJing skills, and one of them actually won a turntable in the turntable contest, so that was pretty exciting. And one of my favorites this year, Vision to Learn, came. Every child was screened, and we brought the exams right to them. We have about 140 students that received new glasses, or their prescriptions might have been changed, or they might have been referred for some things that we might not have picked up, so that was really great. And I think some of our kids are sporting their glasses. Next slide, please. So this is a little bit more of our celebrating. We had our English learners take some of the tests this year, and they had a little ice cream party. We, on the upper right-hand corner, we take place in the I Ready and M Classic Testing. And middle of the year, these kids partied because they either were proficient or above, or they made really great groups, so they were excited. They got to parade around. We did a little conga line. On the bottom left, you could see that was one of our PBIS events for positive behavior. We have monthly celebrations for middle school students and our elementary school students. And those were actually our middle school students. They did some pumpkin painting, and they were very creative in that, and so those are some of our winners. And our event on the lower right-hand corner, that is the student council. They wanted a spirit week, so we got a spirit week, and we had Dress-Up Day, Green Day, 80s/90s Day, Crazy Hair Day, and Duggan Pride. So that was really exciting. So these are some of the great things that we've been doing here. And if any of you have any questions for me, I am available for those questions, as well as my student council. They will be more than happy to ask any questions or answer any questions for you.
Commissioner Rosso.
I just, just hang on. Hello? First of all, I just want to, I was on the tours today. I just wanted to thank the student council. They did a fantastic job, and if this is our future, we're in pretty good shape. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. It was a great tour. Kids are very knowledgeable about their surroundings, so it's good to see, and the school looks great. School looks great. Okay, next we have a special presentation. We have the members of our state champions, the Waterbury Career Academy Basketball Team here tonight, so that we can applaud them for their great accomplishments. Dr. Ruffin?
At this time At this time, Coach, I would like for you to come forward with your players, and please say a few words to the board. We are all so incredibly proud of all of you, and I feel like we're in the presence of rock stars here. And so please, take some time, tell us a little bit about your team, and we want to share and just let you know how deeply we are so proud of all of you bringing home the win.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So we don't have our full team here today, but I'll call in the players out that we have here. We have Jeremiah Williams, Alex Turner, Mackay Simmons, Dylan Rossi, Zaire Lot, who was also named All-State this year, so congratulations. Jonathan Bracy, and Zaire Moreno.
And Coach, would you introduce yourself for anybody who might not know who you are?
My name is Ronan O'Leary. I am a teacher at Waterbury Career Academy, and I've been the basketball coach the whole time we've had our program, which has been just over, it's our eighth year.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Are you able, are you able to list the players who couldn't be here?
So the other members, their names?
Yes, please.
So, let's see if I can remember this off the top of my head. We have Sonny Pierce, Jason Kennedy, Andrew Williams, Dasani Yates, Zaire Etzen, Aiden Cross, Jose La Boy. Is that it? Zaire Etzen. I think that's them all, and most of them are seniors, you know, who aren't here. Senioritis has kicked in, I think, so, yeah, but they're tremendous, every player, tremendous players. We just had a special group of players that have come together, a career academy. We just get the opportunity to coach whoever comes through the door. And fortunately, it's an amazing school, and we had some amazing basketball players that have put a lot of hard work in, and for us to have this season where we won our first NVL title, and then we won our first state championship, it was just a magical, memorable season, and I'm very proud of the kids, and I'm proud to be the coach of this school.
Great. Congratulations.
Absolutely. And Coach, we also want to thank you for just spreading the talent of your team across the district. I understand today you had a special treat with having pizza, and very importantly, you also visited Kingsbury. I heard from the school how excited they were and the impact that you're making on the youth in Waterbury, so I want to commend you and all the players for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, the kids had a great experience today, interacting with the students at Kingsbury. We have a few other meetings set up with other elementary schools, and we chose the schools where these young men went as elementary school kids. So it was special for some of these young men to go in to their old school, see their old teachers, see how excited they were, and it all came full circle, but it was really fun, and I think the kids, they were a little nervous about going in there, but I think I could see they really enjoyed their interactions, and it was a great experience overall.
Would you mind if they shared some of the schools that they've come from?
Sure. Jeremiah? Alex? Okay. Mackay? Dylan?
How you feel with all this glory going on?
It's surreal, you know. It's, everybody loves a winner, you know, so it's been excellent, and the kids have been loving it too, and they deserve all the plaudits because, you know, there's a lot of hard work that goes into it. They work hard every single year, but this year it all came together, and all the hard work paid off, and we just put this run together, and it's been a fantastic ride, and we're going to keep on riding the wave.
Awesome.
Yeah.
The board was very pleased as well, as all of us here, our central office staff, the Board of Ed, that we were able to support you in the ring, practicing of the ring. And could you give us an update on when you're getting them?
Yes, yes. We didn't know how any of this worked, but we were delighted to find out the district is going to provide us with championship rings. We just got sized for them a couple days ago. We saw a sample of them. They are enormous, and they are fantastic. And we're very excited. They're all personalized, and we're very, very grateful. But they're going to be here, and they said eight to nine weeks, so that's going to be another celebration whenever they arrive, and we're very excited to get those, so very grateful.
Awesome.
Commissioner Vanstone.
Thanks, Madam President, through you. Well, Coach, I've known you before your high school coaching career.
Yeah.
Had a great career of your own at post, when you came over, crossed the big ocean. But I only was able to see you guys once this year. It was at home, home court. And unfortunately, my nephew, who came from the other side of the state to play you guys, and you beat him. But it was a great game. It was absolutely a great game tonight.
Terrific game.
I think both teams were in the 90s, if I remember correctly.
It was the height of the 80s, yeah.
Yeah, great game. But you still beat my nephew. I'm not going to
Apologies.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Coach, if you don't mind having your players and yourself come here. The board also has, through our communications director, Michelleis, we've prepared a little swag bag for you.
Awesome.
And we'd like to shake your hands.
Thank you very much. And one last thing. I just want to thank Mrs. Gopi and Mr. Albini, former administrators, bosses of mine, but they played a big part in, you know, molding these young men's futures as well, so thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is public speaking. Commissioner Nardozzi, could I have a motion?
I motion to suspend the regular order of business to hear from the public.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Speaker, first speaker tonight is Kevin Egan from the WTA. Kevin, I appreciate your patience tonight. It's just been one thing after the other.
No worries. I mean, there's no way of, I didn't want to speak before the state championship career, Waterbury Career Academy team came up to accept their award by any means. But, you know, good evening tonight. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to address a couple things with you this week. Unfortunately, not all great things that I have to say tonight, but certainly worth a moment to just ponder and take a deep look into some of the things that are going on this week. In the midst of Teacher Appreciation Week, our 1,400 teachers were mandated to go to a PD over at Crosby High School this Wednesday. Many of the principals had to shuffle around their teacher appreciation luncheons. Many of the principals had to reshift things around, the types of ceremonies they had planned. We had asked for this to have been done virtually, and we were told and known certain terms that that was not an option. The irony of that is that the message, if it was done virtually, would have been so more well-received than it was at this PD, where we had a mass amount of people in a gymnasium. Acoustics were deplorable. I could hear nothing in the back of the room, and I could see less than that. That's not just coming from me, but that's coming from comments and text messages that I've received from teachers from during the meeting yesterday, where I had a pregnant teacher driving around for a half an hour trying to find a parking spot, all the way to teachers who parked up in the plaza up on Meriden, on the corner of Meriden Road and Pierpont, and walked down to Crosby to attend this meeting, in which we really could not hear or see anything. Now, now let me be clear. I'm not, I understand that the message was very important, but ironically, I had communicated the same message to my building reps 30 days before at a rep council. So I was confused as to the urgency of this, why it was planned this way, and why we could not have this done virtually. Furthermore, I had teachers who were very anxious and had anxiety over going to a gymnasium into a building where just a few days before, we had a loaded gun found on the premises of one of the students there. And as some of my teachers told me, we were told about that we have too many arrests yesterday, and we have to cut down on the arrests. All understandable. I understand your point of view, but never did we ever speak about the safety of our students and teachers during our meeting yesterday. I mean, we need to do better, folks. Every, every police officer I speak to was not surprised that a loaded gun was found on the premises of one of our high schools. Of all of us sitting here today, I mean, if you ask my teachers, they'll tell you. Are we all convinced that that was an isolated incident? I am not convinced. My teachers are not convinced, and we need to do something. We need to add a layer of protection for our students and for our teachers, and for, actually, for the entire staff. We cannot do this. And this meeting was held in the wake of these types of incidents. Last Thursday, we have a student that published two kill lists with teachers' names on the kill list. That was on a Thursday. On Monday, I could not get an officer just to hang around in the parking lot up there, once again, to put teachers' anxiety at ease. It took me until 3:00 PM on Monday to get a police officer up there, and the WTA president is doing it. Why is the WTA president asking for a police officer when this should, it should have been done on Friday? It's because the teachers were desperate, and they called me Monday. Last week, we had, in a K-8 school, we had a third grader announce to the class that he had a gun in his backpack. Where is the proactive measures? What are we doing? What are we doing? It's the elephant in the room. All right, so what do we do to make sure there are no guns or knives or weapons in the classrooms? Well, I would like to start that conversation with somebody because I don't want to be the one to come back to say, I told you so. But y'all know me, and I will. And that's not a threat. But this is serious stuff, folks. And I think it's time to look in the mirror. And everyone needs to ask themselves, are we doing what we need to do to make sure we don't have another incident where loaded guns from a student who admitted that he was part of a gang? Guess what? He's probably not the only student that's part of a gang. The incident about the K-8, that's in the school of one of our board members' relatives. Goes to the school. Some of our other board members have family members that teach in our schools. We've got to start asking ourselves, why did this happen at Crosby? And what are we doing to prevent it? So on the heels and in the shadows of that, we get to go to a PD to tell us a very important message, I understand, but never even, WTA asked for the opportunity to address. We didn't get that. But while my teachers are sitting there asking themselves, are we really safe? We're getting a very muddled message about the amount of arrests that we have. And years like 2021 are being brought up, and it's now 2023, but we had to do this meeting Wednesday. Is that time? Thank you, Carrie. I just want everyone, I just am asking, I'm asking everyone to rethink how we're doing this, and if there's anything else we could do to prevent another incident from like that happening. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker this evening. Commissioner Nardozzi, can you return us, please?
I motion to return to the regular order of business. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I do want to note tonight that we have our two student representatives with us from Crosby High School, Florenza Armari and Mikael Holmes. Welcome, ladies. And again, we spoke earlier, but if you have any questions about anything that's on the agenda, please let me know. Just raise a hand, and we'll call on you to speak, okay? Welcome, and thank you for being here today. Next item on our agenda is the Committee of the Whole to update from the Connecticut Junior Republic Programs, Ms. Gopi, Mr. Pabon, and CJR.
Good evening, President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano Adorno, commissioners, our student representatives, and Dr. Ruffin. We are pleased to have with us this evening our partners from the Connecticut Junior Republic. They are here to provide an update on two programs that are being implemented to support our students across the district. The clinical program and the after-school SAFE program, that stands for Success Always Follows Education. Presenting this evening is Katie Guest, the Clinical Supervisor of the Waterbury Partnership, Katie Pelletier, the Clinical Director at the CJR Wellness Center, and Joanne Medina, Coordinator of the SAFE program. Also in attendance this evening, sitting in the rear of the room, is Ms. Anna Flamengo, the Director of Community Programs. Anna, can you please give a wave in the back? And Jennifer Grant, the Director of Behavioral Health. Okay, and I'll turn it over to CJR.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank you first for having us here tonight. We appreciate speaking in front of you. My name is Katie Guest. I am the Clinical Supervisor for the CJR Waterbury School Partnership. In the beginning of the 2022-2023 school year, we collaborated with Waterbury Schools by integrating six of our mental health therapists into three middle schools and three high schools. Our master's level licensed therapists are providing students with an intake assessment in individual and family mental health therapy sessions for one hour, once weekly. Typically, the clients on our caseloads are struggling with PTSD, anxiety, depression, ADHD, self-harming, and suicidal ideation. All of our therapists tailor a clinical treatment plan to meet the needs of their individual client, ensuring they are providing them with evidence-based practices, tools, and skills to increase their emotion regulation, distress tolerance, and improve overall emotional and psychological, social well-being. Do we have our slides?
Looks like they're checking on it.
Okay. Thank you so much. I was going to talk about that.
Okay. So we're starting on the first slide.
Oh, you have it. I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay, so here is a picture of the therapist Carolyn Robinson's bulletin board outside of her office at West Side Middle School. And the statement on her board, I know it's a little small, so you might not be able to read it, but it says, "Imagine if we obsessed about the things we love about ourselves." And this is just a great example of how Carolyn has integrated herself into the school. Not only are the students on her caseload able to see this message, but so are all the other students that pass by her room each day. On the next slide is our data collected from August 29th of 2022 through April 30th of 2023. And over the past eight months, the CJR Waterbury School Partnership has admitted and served 131 students. The next slide. We have a total of 2,094 clinical appointments attended by clients on our therapist's caseload. And now I would like to introduce you to our Clinic Director, Katie Pelletier, who will share the remainder of our program's information. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. We're super excited to share all the stuff that we've been doing in this collaboration. It's really been an amazing journey, and our clinicians and Katie and myself have just enjoyed immensely working with the administrators, support staff, and everyone in your buildings. So on this first slide, Katie will kind of show you, and I think you guys can see on your computer. It shows the attendance rate of a client that was receiving individual therapy services in our Waterbury office prior to the Waterbury School and CJR partnership starting. The client's attendance rate for therapy was at 71% when being seen at CJR's Waterbury office. When the Waterbury School and CJR partnership started, this client then transferred to individual therapy services at Crosby High School. As you can see, the attendance rate increased to 91% after the transfer. This is a significant difference and shows that the barriers to physically getting to services decreased when the services became available at Crosby High School. All of our therapists will be available in the summer months to continue to support the students on their caseload. CJR has worked with the school administrators to ensure that the students can still access the services in the school building over the summer or in our offices, whichever location is easier for the students to access. The next slide, which Katie will show you guys. This is a two-week snapshot of other services that CJR's therapists are providing during the school day. When we created this collaboration, CJR wanted to make sure that there were multiple ways we could support the students and staff. These services represent interventions for students that are not on the CJR caseload and have been identified as needing support from administrators, support staff, or teachers. For example, a check-in or individual session may occur because the school has recognized that a student could benefit from some therapeutic intervention, and their staff do not have the time or resources available to provide that intervention at the moment. Or one barrier that has come up at times is that parents do not always return phone calls and complete intakes with CJR therapists to start therapy. If this occurs, the CJR therapist will work with the school to support the identified student while still trying to get access to the parents for intake and assessment. This slide also shows the hours of crisis intervention, mediation, risk assessments that our CJR therapists have provided over a two-week period of time. For example, Crosby's support staff just asked our Spanish-speaking therapist to access, to assess one of their Spanish-speaking students who was in the bathroom in crisis. Our therapist assessed her and determined she was suicidal and needed immediate hospital evaluation. The client was sent to the hospital for these services. Our CJR therapist will jump in when necessary to support and provide clinical interventions and recommendations whenever needed. The last slide that Katie will show you are, we sent out a survey to principals in the district. This was back, I think, in February. And basically, the survey asked, "Have you seen an improvement in functioning with the students that are being provided services from CJR therapists assigned to the building?" 100% felt that they did see an increase in improvement in overall functioning of these students. The next question asked in the survey was, "Are the students engaging with the CJR therapist?" 100% felt that they were engaging with the CJR therapist. And the last question was, "Are CJR services helpful with providing crisis management to students in the building?" 96.6% that responded felt that it was helpful for crisis management. The slides also offer direct quotes about what they are seeing and feeling as a result of the Waterbury School and CJR partnership. And you can see, you can see those quotes on the slide. They come directly from the principals within the school system. Thank you. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions?
So now I will introduce Joanne Medina. She is part of our SAFE program. It runs the after-school program at CJR.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Medina. I am the Program Coordinator for the SAFE program at CJR. And I would like to also go through our slides, which you have available, as to what is the status of our program at the moment and how have we have come about within the past few months. So, um, on the first slide that you will see, you will see our daily schedule. We have a daily schedule that we follow with our students. There is a breakdown, something that they're actually already getting used to at this point. They're used to come in, there's usually a routine. For example, you know, coming in at 2:30, and we usually like to tackle the academic assistance at the beginning of the, of the, their day. So what we see here is that the students come in, and they are open to bringing in their Chromebooks. We have Wi-Fi available for them for their Chromebooks. If they don't have a Chromebook, we actually have the available electronics that they can access their schoolwork. But we do try to get our stu-, our teachers to work with them on their academic achievements. Then we move on to the snack time, group participation, and on to the end of the day. So that's what you see as the breakdown of the daily schedule. On our second slide, it's kind of like a breakdown of what we currently have enrolled students in the program. We currently have 31 students enrolled in the program. And three referrals are actually pending intake that was as of yesterday. But as of today, that is now down to one student and 32 being enrolled into the program as we had a completed intake within the past 24 hours. And we're currently serving eight schools in the district, and these schools have participated mostly in middle school and eighth grade, and, and grades K through eight. Status since the program started in November.
Jose, if you can go to the slide that says, "Program Start November."
Go back a couple more. Maybe a couple more. Gonna go back a few more. We're going forward. More towards the beginning of, of the SAFE program. One more. Two more. We could move two more. Slide 13. Sorry, slide number 13. There we are. We could, um, let's see. Yes, we can come. We'll, let's go to number 12. I'm sorry. Let's go to number 12. Which is our next, yes. So we have faced a few challenges as to the program from the initial, from initially starting up until now. But we've also had a few changes. For example, our program started late due to the busing challenges. Challenges getting busing scheduled for new youth was an issue. For example, adding kids to the bus route at the end of the day was the most important thing to accomplish prior to them starting, and that kind of took a little bit of a, of a lengthy time. Length of time that youth are on the bus at the end of the day. It's something that we're kind of like addressing at the moment because as we enroll more students, we are trying to get a second bus, so they are not in the bus so late in the day. And the, the only high schools participating are Crosby and Enlightenment. We currently only have one high school student. Enlightenment is participating, but the students that are enrolled are middle schoolers. So we are trying to get the high schools to actually come onboard a little bit more so we can have that balance in the age range of the students as we only have currently one high schooler. But we are really working towards that and accomplishing that. If we can go to the next slide. So these are the components of our groups. The components are the, the family life and education component. This component focuses on the learning curriculum, the learning curriculum of the component is self-control, communication, and skill building. And this is also academic support. This is a teacher that we currently have onboard from the Crosby High School who helps the students with English, Language Arts, and Science. We also have academic assessment and assistance group, which is the teacher that actually focuses on the math and history area of the academic assistance. Next slide. Other components are the lifetime, sport, recreation, self-esteem assessment, enhancement, my apologies. This group actually works on vision boards, self-reflection, self-portraits, making healthy decisions, social skills activities, and yoga. So they work together in helping the students pretty much who can maybe be struggling with some of these. The job club and entrepreneurial component of the program, it works with mainly with high schoolers on the job application role plays, resume building for high school students. And they also do, they're starting your own business activities, bake sales, and things that pretty much help them understand the importance of entrepreneur as well as they have a safe store that they go around and they try to sell things in the building. Next slide, please. Our culinary arts program, they pretty much focus on the safety in the kitchen, cost effectiveness in the kitchen, diverse weekly menus such as Asian, Italian, or Italian, and many other, amongst many others. Cooking an entree and dessert daily is one of the things that they do on a daily basis. And we also have video production and graphic arts learning, which they, their focus is to learn about video and photo equipment, learning the basics of photo shopping, making short clips, developing podcasts. And each one of these group components have, or are at the capability of having 10 students in each one, totaling up to 60 students if possibly enrollment. Next slide, please. So we do have an incentive program that we work with, with the students. It's pretty much just to kind of like keep them motivated and engaging. So our students shops with points in the safe store that they earn on Fridays for items of interest, games, and other rewards. These, these points are practically given to the students by the staff members and the mentors that are available to them. Many of the things, students are rewards for positive attitudes, behaviors within the program, school, and home. Students may lose points if their interactions and participation are not positive. So there's a lot of things, there's a lot of communication that I try to keep with the schools as to how we can accomplish this incentive program to move forward with the students and try to keep them engaged. Positive behaviors include maintaining communication between the SAFE program coordinator and school or home, receiving positive feedback from staff and positive progress reports, and building a reinforcement of healthy skills and behaviors. Next slide, please. We have a data collection at the moment that we work with, with the students, but this is something that we actually collect on a daily basis, which is their attendance. So there is survey reports that they have taken, and this pretty much shows that 100% of students stated that they had an increase in commitment to attending an educational program after high school. 80% had an increased interest in researching post-high school education and opportunities, and 80% increased their commitment to apply to financial aid. CJR has established about a 75% internal benchmark on these. Next slide, please. Some of the program highlights that we been, that have actually been of success to the program is that CJR has set the internal benchmark at 75%, and we are right under that when it comes to our attendance, to 70%. We are just below. 29 students met this benchmark for at least one month of the months that they have been enrolled. 13 students had perfect attendance for the, for at least an entire month, and 20 students had 90% attendance for at least a month since their admission date. There have only been three behavioral incidents since the start program, one during programming, one on the bus, and one on social media. Next slide, please. There was also a, a questionnaire going out to the, to the teachers and the administrators of the schools here in Waterbury, and we also received some feedback as to the program. And some of the questions asked there was, how was the communication between the director of the program or coordinator of the program with the students or with the teachers or the administrators? And also if they have seen any improvement in the students or within the students. And 86% of school personnel have collaborated with the SAFE program. That was one of the, of the things that we received back. But these are some of the comments that we've actually gotten back from the school administrators as to our relationship and how our relationship is doing between CJR and the schools when it comes to the SAFE program. And that concludes my presentation for today. If anyone has any questions?
Vice President Hernandez and then Commissioner Brown. Hi. Great presentation. You said there were three incidents that occurred, one in school, one on the bus, and one on social media. How were they handled?
Um, these were, we practically just, what we did, for example, the one on the bus was an incident with apparently a threat. So we did request a bus footage from the bus company. We did put the kids on hold from coming to the program, the kids that were involved. We met with the, the parents and discussed the situation as to how we would make a safe environment for them and what was our steps to move forward with the situation. And one, we, once we received the bus footage and we were able to pretty much look into the situation, then we went ahead and made a decision. We tried not to keep them out for too long. It did, was, it was a lengthy process when it comes to the bus footage, but that's, that's one of the things that was resolved. Other instances, for example, the one during the program, we pretty much do mediation with the students. We like to sit down with them. We like to mediate the situation. We do keep them away initially for a couple of days. And the day that they return, I make sure that I am available to them as well as a couple of staff in which we can sit down, we can mediate the situation, and we can move forward, making sure that the kids feel safe in the program.
Social media?
The one in social media, it was, it was more something that we addressed to the parents, and we were able to provide the parents with some resources as to how can they control the, the gadgets that their students have? What are some things that they can have visual of? And we also have, were able to sit down with the parents and assure that this is something that would move on forward. So we did put a system in place in which when the students do come in, they provide us their phones. us their, um, phones. And we, that has been actually very effective because it has, it has not been a distraction during their groups and what they are there to accomplish for the day, as well as it keeps client confidentiality and, you know, it doesn't just become an issue within, with, amongst them in using their social media and connecting them that way.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown and then Commissioner Serrano.
Thank you for the information. I had a question in terms of what is the criteria for referral to this afternoon program? I'm concerned the numbers are really low. Uh, so I'm just wondering, what is the criteria and, and, um, it must be, I mean, to me, if you have kids coming in and out, you know, I'm, I'm coming today, I'm coming tomorrow, it, it seems chaotic to me, uh, instead of having, okay, you know, 30, 60 kids, you're signing up for this after-school program, it's going to start on October 1st, and it's going to finish, you know, whatever, April 1st, and you're going to be there every day. I, I don't understand how, I, I guess I'm trying to understand how the, how the recruitment goes and how they get there.
Okay, so the recruitment, the referral process is done by the schools, um, either the administrators or the counselors over at the schools?
What's the criteria? I mean, what, what's the criteria they're using for the ref- are they, is it attendance issue? Is it social-emotional? Is it?
Yes, they're looking for academic challenges as well as behavioral, um, challenges. Um, the other one is truancy or social skills, having to rebuild social skills.
Did you see my, my issue here? It sounds like, you know, these referrals should be done in a more organized way so that the students are going. I mean, it doesn't look like we have a good attendance, and I know the busing was an issue, but I guess I'm just saying, you know, if I'm looking at a roster and I'm saying, okay, you know, I've got 15 kids in the seventh grade, I've got 15 kids in the eighth grade, why not recruit them and have them go as a group? Am I missing something?
So I think, um, Joanne, as a part of the presentation, I'm sorry to interject, but it is a very structured process. So what happens is the students are identified by your school administrators.
Yeah.
Can I ask you to step up and use the microphone? I'm sorry.
And then they stay enrolled in the program, so it's not like they are coming and going.
Okay.
So after a student is identified in the program, they get to stay there. One of the hugest benefits of the program is that if you're enrolled, let's say you're enrolled in the seventh grade, you don't have to be discharged from the program. So it's not like a ongoing, you're discharged in four months or three months, you could stay in the program for the duration of your time in high school. So that piece, um, was not mentioned.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, okay.
Also, Commissioner, in terms of the recruitment, um, there have been several meetings with the school administrators, school counselors, and CJR and myself presented the components of the program to them, um, supported them in recruiting of students into the program, outreach to parents, communication with the teachers. And so as Anna did share with you, the students, once they're accepted into the program, they stay in the program until they graduate through high school, and they are offered scholarship opportunities upon their completion of, uh, the CJR program.
Okay, I, I'm just hoping that, you know, as this catches on, because it sounds like it's a phenomenal opportunity to support our students, and when we look at the, the numbers of, of schools, of our chronic absentee rates and so forth, I mean, all these interventions really need, are needed, and I'm hoping that we can, you know, really, uh, you know, you know, put a, act as a catalyst so that more kids are availing themselves of these services so that we can help more kids, so. But thank you, okay. That clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Secretary Serrano.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, ladies. Thank you for the presentation. Um, so on, again, great, great presentation. My question, obviously, you got feedback from administrators, I'm curious to hear about the parents. How, what is your relationship with the parents? How involved are they?
Well, when it comes to their involvement, um, it's something that we constantly have
Struggle.
Struggle with, yes, absolutely. A lot of them work, um, which is a lot of the reasons why their students are at our, with, within our program, you know, having the extra assistance that they need that they don't, that cannot get at home due to their work, um, um, schedules or any other reasons that they may have. But there is quite a handful of, like, many of the parents that actually stay in communication. One of the communication daily is that if they arrive to the program or they didn't. So automatically I get to see who has replied, thank you for letting me know, or perhaps excusing their child as to why they didn't come to the program. So that's one of the communications that we have on a daily basis. And of course, when there is an academic, um, assistance challenge, what we do is that we communicate with the schools and we put together a, um, we, I usually go into the schools, either meet with their, with the teachers and the social workers to try to put a program, uh, uh, system in place that we can help them. One of the systems was a, a homework agenda, you know, reporting with a homework agenda that their teachers take participation in and things like this. And then we always communicate those things with the parents. So it's kind of like a conjunction with the, within the communications, is a conjunction of CJR with the school and with the parent, and it's, just continues pretty much as a cycle.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. I, I think, as, as busy parents can be to really try to maintain, I, I, throughout the years, it's always been conversations between all of us is how do we get more parental involvement? Um, but to kind of constantly keep that doors, um, open, that line of communication open where maybe during after hour or another day that they can be communicated or update on their progress. Because I'm curious to see if they see a difference in their own child, you know, or whatever, if they, if they could be somewhat, you know, I, you know, that, I'm just kind of curious about that per, part, you know, person. I'm glad that the teachers may see a difference or the administrators or even the students, but I'm kind of curious to hear about, you know, the parents, or maybe do, maybe like an open house. I, I, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out, you know. I heard if you bring food, it, right?
Right. We also have, um, within CJR, um, we have a system in which we like to, um, is the CSQs? And those either go out to the parents or the, the students. So that usually within CJR, we already have that system in place in which we should be hearing from them very soon because towards the last weeks of the, some of this program, we're looking forward to getting those questionnaires out and getting an answer, and we, that is something that we could always provide and, um, be able to provide to you guys as well.
Thank you. And, and again, I'm sure, you know, I don't want to speak for everyone, but we do appreciate the work that you're doing in helping our students, um, so keep up the good work, ladies.
Thank you. I actually strive, you know, in, in doing this work, you know, it's, it's something, I'm a product of this program myself, and I was a student in the Waterbury area, and now I just really look forward to continue doing this work for the students because I know it is a program of success and that works and that maintains the, pretty much mentorship for the students to do better. So that's pretty much what we're looking forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ended that with a bang.
I wanted to share that, that Joanne, um, was actually, this was a program that was funded prior, um, through the Department of Social Services, and Joanne was actually a student in the program, um, and she's a Waterbury resident, and now she, you know, she completed the program years ago, came back as a CJR employee, um, and she has a daughter, which is now a teacher in the Waterbury school system. So that just shows the investment that you do in your community and the longevity, um, and I think if you continue that, you'll continue to see the fruits of it. So thank you so much for your partnership.
Amen to that. Wow, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Annie.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Narzozzi.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one question. And just looking over your slides, um, the only thing you're really measuring is, um, the attendance rate. How are you measuring the efficacy of your program?
That is something that goes through our, um, PQI department, but they do have a, we actually just did questionnaires for the students, um, which is, for example, the slide that shows that they are looking to or focusing more into doing, um, education after high school. So that's one of the things that we look forward to is, is we are currently building up what our questionnaire is going to look like a little further into what we're looking forward, but in the meantime, we have done pre-ta- pre and ta- and post-test. That actually shows that there has been a little improvement as they move on, especially for our culinary program. We, we look to see, is this something that you look forward to? And another thing that we do is that within the incentive program, we are incentivizing that they, if they increase their grades and things like this, that it's kind of like show the efficacy of the program. But within ourselves in the PQI department, we're still working on putting that together and seeing what the measurements are. But we do have that system in place that we're trying to get there.
I'd like to see you come back in a year and see where we're at with that.
That would be great. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much for a very interesting report. Thank you. Our next item, committee of the whole requests approval of a professional services agreement with Staywell Healthcare Incorporated for mobile dental services. Ashlyn McGucklin, our director of, uh, city director of health.
Good evening, President Sweeney, Vice President Serrano, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin, and student representative. My name is Alvaro Lame, I'm the Director of Community Strategy. Ashlyn was not able to make it today, so I'm representing the Waterbury Health Department. In behalf of the Waterbury Health Department, we're requesting the approval of professional agreement with Staywell Health Center to deliver mobile dental services to 34 Waterbury schools. These services will be provided at no cost to the city and the Waterbury Department of Education. Our goal is to partner with this community provider to deliver quality preventative dental care to the students at the school as well as to increase the student participation in the three years of this agreement. Any questions?
Commissioner Brown and then Commissioner O'Brien.
Good evening. I'm very excited about this program. Uh, I just had a question. Are, as the barrier of them having health insurance, a lot of times they can't get access because they don't, they're not signed up for Husky, is that going to be, is that a barrier?
It's not a barrier, as you can see on that agreement as well. Um, we are partnering with the federally qualified health centers that part of their care system is to serve everybody regardless of their ability to pay.
Great.
Therefore, it will not be an issue.
Great.
They will incur the cost to the agency and not the student.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Um, I have a couple of questions, Madam President. Considering that a lot of our schools are tight space, I was reading the contract last night, and I noticed that one of the contingencies is that they have space on the lower level with water, um, at a certain size because of the transportation of materials. What happens if we don't have that space in the school?
It is not a problem. They are mobile dental ser- uh, equipments that are able to be transported at different levels. It is preferable on the first floor because they are between 25 to 40 pounds, so it does help in terms of the water. They are portable bottles, so if there is no vicinity where the services are being provided, as long as it's within walking distance, this will not be an issue.
And my other question was with the younger students, um, are they going to be going down by themselves? Are they going to have an adult escorting them? These are young kids that are going to be going into a program that...
This program has existed before. We are moving toward a more professional agreement, that's why we went through the round of going out for an RFP, to ensure that it's a partnership between the City of Waterbury and Department of Education, the providers themselves to, so the kids have a, a full system of care, not only educationally, but also in terms of their healthcare, specifically their oral health. So usually for the younger kids, we partner with either, um, part of the process is going through either the school secretary or the classroom where the kids are coming from, so they are going down to where the services are going to be provided with
With an adult.
A staff member of the educational department, correct?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Great program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have request approval to participate in Healthy Food Certification Program per Connecticut General Statute 10-215F.
President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano, Edorno, Board of Ed Commissioners, Board of Ed Student Representatives, and Superintendent Ruffin. Good evening. Here for our two separate approvals this evening. One is for, to participate in the Healthy Food Certification, and the second is to allow exemptions. This is something we've been doing for quite a while. Every year, it's an annual approval for the following school year.
Okay.
Is there any questions?
Any questions? Vice President Hernandez.
Hi, Linda.
Hi.
Um, what exemptions? What do you mean?
So if it's a special event, a sporting event, we would be allowed to serve the items that are not, um, the healthy certification list. It exempts beverages and, and the snacks that are listed, we could, on the healthy snack list, could be sold at those events.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you, President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano, Edorno, and Commissioners. Um, Linda, I have a question, but it's not a trick question.
Sure.
It's going to sound that way. Since we're applying for a food and beverage exemption, what would it take if we tried a coffee bar at a school?
So the coffee could only be served during the, a special event? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm trying to just see how far I could push it.
Okay. Yeah, because coffee, soda, chocolate would normally not be allowed, so that would be part of an exemption and the approval, and only at those special events.
Okay.
I like your idea, though.
I tried. That comes from my student advisor.
Yes, they want coffee.
Anyone else on this one? Okay, Linda, you're up for the next one as well. And so we have a request for approval to participate, oh, sorry, request approval of, yeah, food and beverage exemption. Is that, that's the one you just covered?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Okay, then you're good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, and next up, request approval to apply, apply for this CSDE Career in Technical Education Supplemental Enhancement Grant, and we need consensus on this one tonight. Mr. Schwartz.
Good evening, President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano, Edorno, Board of Ed Commissioners, our student representatives, welcome, and Dr. Ruffin. Uh, this is a request for approval of the Supplemental Perkins Grant for $50,000. Uh, we meet all the criteria to, uh, go for this, this grant. We do need consensus tonight. Uh, we are going to be using this grant, um, and in fact, we're actually going $400 over, which we have confirmed with our chief financial officer, we can cover that $400 to be able to purchase something that I think is very exciting. There's one commissioner that's here tonight, not here tonight, that I think will be excited to hear about it, but it is to purchase high-tech, uh, uh, gaming computers. I want to see the students. They like, they like what I'm saying here, so let me keep, let me keep going. So, um, but you got to take a course. Uh, so, so we are, uh, we would be using these computers for, uh, game design and developmental one and two courses. We also are very, very interested in also in starting a new esports program, which is a competitive program, actually, uh, the CAC-approved competitive program for esports. This would allow us to also, uh, prepare students to eventually take something that I've been trying, uh, very hard to, um, influence. trying very hard to influence, and this, this will, this will, this will get us there, A P Computer Science Principles would allow our students, once they, once they go through this game design pathway, to be able to take that A P Computer Science Principles course. And so it will, it will serve a few purposes for the courses and the C T E, but, hello? And, but also for the esports program for after-school club that we would also like to get going for the upcoming school year.
Okay. Dr. Ruffin.
Yes, President Sweeney, I have a comment before. The reason why this is coming at this time is because the State Department released it at a, at a very late, so the turnaround time was exceedingly short, and our next board meeting would not have afforded us an opportunity to ask you for this.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Is there any next one?
Consensus?
Oh, does anyone object to remove? Okay, we need to remove item, no, no.
Which one?
Oh.
It's the basketball downstairs.
Just some days, it takes a while for it to sink in. Does anyone object to applying for the grant? Okay. No objections. Okay.
We have a presentation ready for you.
Xbox, PlayStation.
Yep. We are removing item six and seven due to staff not being available. We have some illness going around. So, item number eight, request approval of amendment one to the professional services agreement with Re-Center Race and Equity in Education Incorporated for Equity Strategic Plan and Professional Development. And it's Jan Frenness and Laura White.
Well, I'm Jan tonight.
Well, I'm Laura tonight.
But you get to be Dr. White. And as a, just a quick summary, we are not looking to add any additional funding. We just need one more year with this contract to ensure that the services are delivered. And so we, we are asking for an extension of one year to be able to utilize all the funding we've put forth towards the, working with Re-Center.
Any questions? Okay. We're good.
Nice job, Dr. White.
Okay, so are you Jan all the rest of the night, then?
I'm Jan all the night.
Okay. So item number nine, request approval of a professional services agreement with Police Activity League of Waterbury Incorporated for PAL Summer 2023 Basketball Program.
Thank you again, President Sweeney. The next few items are all, the district utilizing the Esser Grant. As you have seen in the past, we have collaborated with several groups, this one specifically about PAL, to run a summer program for our students Monday through Friday, July 10th through September 1st for about 300 students ages nine to seven, and, and it will include playoffs and championship games and trophies and medallions and team shirts and the basketball.
Any questions? Commissioner Ireland.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask this question. Do you know if girls are able to play in this basketball?
Yeah, I think I got that question last year. This is co-ed.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Next one is the same for Greater Waterbury Y M C A, for Y M C A Summer Camp?
Yes, 350 camper sessions for two-week sessions, and a great opportunity for our students to take advantage of this. We did, we were able to also, I know we had the presentation earlier in the year, but harking back on that, there were some students that were able to take multiple two-week sessions to be able to last for the summer, so was very popular with, with parents. And so, and the way this works up, what this works is that parents sign up through the Y, the, the district's kind of hands off at that point in terms of, we'll help promote it, but the, they'll, they'll sign up through the Y, they'll sign up through PAL, Boys and Girls, and then once they sign up, they'll use this funding to be able to pay for that student to, to attend.
Any questions on that one? Okay. Number 12, request approval of amendment one to the professional services agreement with Rubicon West LLC to provide online curriculum and lesson planning warehouse. Dr. Eckler and Fo'Jan.
Well, I am Dr. Eckler, but I believe we had item 11.
Yeah.
For Boys and Girls.
I apologize.
It's okay.
Yep. Boys and Girls Club for the same, an agreement.
The same agreement, yes.
Summer, yeah. Summer enrichment program. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, President Sweeney. Appreciate that. Again, 96 of our students to attend the Boys and Girls Club from June 26th through August 10th for students ages six to 14, regardless, male or female. A unique range of recreational educational activities, including math and reading enrichment, visual arts, science, technology, creative play, swimming, and weekly field trips. So regardless of the student identifies, they'd all be selected for this.
Okay. Any questions? Vice President Hernandez.
Darren, how many of our students in total between these three programs do we have? I missed the first one for PAL?
So how many total students?
Yeah.
Would be, would be serviced by this? You'll make me do math in, in the public?
Well, I'm trying. I was trying to do it, but I missed how many we're going to.
So that'd be 711.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Did you coordinate on that question before she asked?
No, I'm up, but, you know, some, I know Mr. Vanstone was going to check on me, so at some point.
So that was the Boys and Girls Clubs. Any other questions? Okay. On to the next one, and that is the Rubicon West LLC.
Okay. I'm really excited about this. Interesting contract, the way it was written. It was, we have to come back every year to renew it, which is, you know, Dr. Eckler and I were talking about it earlier. It's one of those, we, through Essers and Secor Cassidy, wrote their contract, something that, you know, if we could rewrite it again, we just would have done a typical three-year agreement, but we have to come back every year. The funding remains the same through the original contract. It's $45,980 a year to be able to have a house for all of our curriculum. And so the curriculum supervisors have been working very hard all year to take all their curriculum from all the different sources, Word docs, Google docs, wherever it exists right now, and putting it into this curriculum management system where you can have a one-stop-shop for all your curriculum, then assessment needs for the district. It, it formalizes and, and, and it, it's a uniform system so that our curriculum all looks the same, which is also going to help us on M E S reports as well, because we usually get dinged on that one part of having curriculum in one location with, with a similar format. And so looking forward to continuing this work. And so we're asking for a one-year extension for this contract.
Any questions? Okay. On to the next one. Request approval of professional service agreement with Seven Angels Theater to provide Seven Angels Theater classes.
Yeah, so this is, this is really exciting, Board. We have, we have, we're seeking a contract with Seven Angels Theater to be able to go into our elementary classrooms and to leverage fine arts and social emotional learning and one ongoing support for students to be able to express themselves. They're going to be like master artists going to the elementary schools, where you are going to work in all of the elementary schools, but Holly is working specifically to, to find out where everyone lands next year. There are some shortages in our elementary schools where we do have substitutes filling in for art or music, and so she is going to try to beef up the support in those schools so that the students don't fall back on the fine arts, their, their fine arts development. And so this is a, their first time trying to, to coordinate something like this. I know Holly's very excited. She's done a lot of work coordinating this with Seven Angels. Again, the resident artists, artists coming over to, to do self-expression, public speaking, to promote a sense of community, and to, to, to build up those skills and not just public speaking, but also empathy skills.
Great. Any questions? Vice President Hernandez.
And that's for all elementary?
Yeah, so the plan right now is for the, all of the elementary schools, but she does have a little asterisk with that, saying, you know, she is looking at those schools that are missing some fine arts teachers, and so, you know, that, if, if a school has, you know, all their fine arts teachers, and we have a school that's missing maybe two or three, she might pull them out, and, and so she's going to, she's asking for a little flexibility with that based on the staffing right now. But the, the goal is for all schools to receive it.
Okay. Thank you.
That's terrific. Okay. Request approval of a memorandum of understanding with Live Girl Inc. as a partnership for Confidence Club. Ms. Gopi?
Okay, back again. Good evening again, President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Commissioners, Student Representatives, and Dr. Ruffin. Tonight, I'm respectfully requesting your approval of a memorandum of understanding with Live Girl Incorporated. Live Girl is a nonprofit organization that will provide coaching sessions with students at the Enlightenment Alternative Program. The program will meet for 45 minutes once per week with up to 15 students for eight-week sessions. They'll work with our students to help them develop their self-esteem, social and emotional skills, leadership, confidence, and public speaking. The program is at no cost to the district. The initial agreement is for the timeframe of two years, and we do have the option to renew it three times with a one-year extension each time. And I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
Commissioner Nardozzi, Commissioner Orso, and then Commissioner Ireland.
Thank you, Madam President. What is a confidence coach and what are their credentials?
The, the confidence coach is a certified counselor that will work with the students in the school, so they have a counseling background. They're not teachers, but they have a counseling background.
Thank you.
Commissioner Orso.
Hi. I, I like the, the no-cost part about this, but why is it no-cost? Why, it doesn't sound a goodness of their heart?
They, they are, they, they, they have grant funding that they secure on their own, and they do bring this program out to students in schools who definitely need this as a resource for them.
Thank you.
So I think that's a great part of this program.
Commissioner Ireland.
Actually, my question was answered. I'm proud to see that there's an organization or a program that would be coming to the schools.
Yes.
Anyone else? Vice President Hernandez.
And it's two years times three years, three times, so they'll...
Up to five years total if we, if we execute the extension. Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. We're good. Thank you, Jade. Okay. Committee on Finance, request approval of a construction contract with Scholar Painting LLC for painting and wallpaper services. Mr. Albini.
Good evening, President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Board of Ed Commissioners, Crosby High School Board of Ed Student Representatives, and Superintendent Dr. Ruffin. This is a request for a contract with Scholar Painting for the painting of the fourth floor in Waterbury Arts Magnet School, the entire fourth floor, that's 15 classrooms, that's a principal's office, school councilor's office, conference room, secretary, two breakout rooms, a special ed room, and a teacher's lounge along with doors, stairwells, and all the orange railing that you see, that decorative orange railing being repainted, and all of the wallpaper in the performance arts building. This is funded with Magnet Arts School money.
Any questions?
I just had a question.
Commissioner Brown.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Albini.
Good evening.
That's very interesting. I didn't realize that the Magnet grant included capital improvements. I didn't realize that.
It, it generally doesn't, but I did ask Shola Freeman, who oversees our budget. We are in our 19th year, so it need a little freshening up. The fourth floor is our middle school floor. So it has been untouched, so it is going to be redone. A few years ago, before I came on, there was a flood, a broken pipe in the performance arts building, if you recall, and it damaged quite a bit of the wallpaper, and it's peeling. So that will all be stripped off and put new wallpaper up.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Albini.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 16. Ms. Biolo, our finance update.
Thank you, President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Commissioners, Student Representatives, Superintendent Dr. Ruffin.
Don't want you to look at me like that.
Thank you, President Sweeney. So I have, I'm here for the update, monthly update on our ARP Esser. So as we know, we have completed the Esser one, which ended last September. We are currently active with the Esser two and the ARP Esser three. Esser two again will end this September. We have total grant of 41.6, 29.5 million expended or encumbered with 12.1 million balance yet to spend. We are confident that we, hopefully, will be able to spend all of this money. That is our goal. There is, sometimes in Esser one, they did allow for an extension at the very end of when the grant was to end. We did not need to act upon that because we had the funds spent, and that is our plan to do the same thing with Esser two, to have it spent before the deadline.
Okay.
So some additional projects that were in, added in on Esser two with some summer school, summer programs, STEM kits, boiler replacement at Rotella. ARP Esser three will end September of '24. That's 89.6 million. Currently, 29.3 is year-to-date expended or encumbered with another 60 million of, 60 million point three left to spend, but as I say every month, there's so much going on that just isn't shown yet. You know, we have to go through the processes of our R F Ps and our contract process, but there is a lot of work being done to spend down the money. Just want to point out that 20% of ARP Esser has to be spent on learning loss.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Tor, Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. There's a lot of rumblings down in Washington about coming back to all this money and trying to take it back. I don't know how real that is, but they are discussing it.
That would be a nightmare.
Please let us see some things that we can work with, because as I've said, I won't talk about how this money got originated, but it's here now, and so hopefully we can find, I'm sure we can find, get under contract some things so we can utilize these dollars before they maybe evaporate. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Doreen, how much is supply chain still impacting this, our ability to spend? Are we still having issues with, with getting materials, getting, you know, staffing, whatever?
Yeah, I think in some areas improved, but there are other areas where we're still having that issue, which, you know, which is causing us to maybe have some of our HVAC projects that were budgeted in Esser two, but because of certain supply chains, we may have to move that to the ARP Esser three HVAC piece, and then move some of the projects in the ARP Esser HVAC that have been completed and move them over into the Esser two. So I'm...
So, I'm right now working on a revision to do that with the state.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right, lastly, expenditure report.
Okay, so the, this is the expenditure report for March, the ninth month of the fiscal year. We are monitoring all these accounts closely. As you'll see, there are a few accounts that are going into a deficit, but we have currently enough surplus to cover and still being able to feel that we are able to put close to 1.5 million into the sinking fund at this time and without touching any of the contingency at the bottom, which we know we use to offset the fiscal year '24 budget. Any questions on the monthly report?
Any questions? Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President, through you. The only one that concerns me, because these last couple of months, it could hit us hard, substitute teachers. Is, are we having a bigger problem than normal with teachers' absences?
So, a lot of this is due to the vacancies. So, we currently have 134 teacher vacancies. Of those 134, it's 124 which are hard-to-fill positions, and of the 124 that are hard-to-fill, 53 of them are special education. So, we are into a contract with ESS as, and we actually raised the rates. We had three amendments to raise the rates to be able to be competitive with other cities and towns, which worked, and they have really been filling our demand, and that's why we're seeing that number growing. But we were able to kind of control this through attrition. And then you'll see when I, I am asking for a transfer of funds in my next.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're good. Thank you, Doreen.
So, my next is the transfer of funds from the general fund operating budget, in total of 2.1 million. We would need 1.1 million to the curriculum instruction professional service line item that is to cover for the substitute teachers with our outside vendor of ESS. We'd like 1 million into special ed tuition, outside tuition, that is for student placements, and we'll be taking that from other various special education payroll accounts through attrition to cover that 1 million. And we would like 100,000 in student transportation services for pupil transportation for busing, and we're going to take that just from a, a line item from teachers from savings. So, that will total the 2.1 million. Any questions on the transfer?
No? Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for everything you do. And next item is the superintendent's update, Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you, President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Commissioners, and Student Representatives. It's a pleasure to report on some of the highlights that I'd like to share with you this evening. I believe you also have that in your packet, but also on the screen. What an honor last night to celebrate the Education Awards. I want to personally thank all of the staff who worked on this excellent presentation, the organization, the teamwork that it took to organize it, many of whom are sitting right there, as well as some who are at the office, or hopefully, they're home by now. I want to thank all of them for, for working on this. It was held May 3rd at the Palace Theater, honored exceptional educators and support Was just thrilled, the, the aura of the entire occasion was absolutely amazing. Our Support Staff of the Year is Kevin "The Grope." Paraprofessional of the Year is Sherrell Herbert. In 2023, Waterbury Teacher of the Year is Lana Elder. She is from Kennedy High School. Sherrell Herbert is from North End, and so, I, I'm so excited to, to share that and thank you to the board members who were there last night to celebrate in this wonderful occasion.
Excuse me, Doctor. She, she was the Administrator-
She was Administrator of the Year.
This is paraprofessional.
Oh, my goodness. And I said it too, and I know, and I was, I called it out last night. We're going to correct that. No.
She is Administrator of the Year.
Yes, absolutely, Administrator of the Year, Sherrell Herbert. Well, Sherrell, I didn't mean that, you know, because we also had a Support Staff of the Year, so it's distinct awards, and I want to recognize all of them. So, thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Good catch.
We will correct that as well. The next slide is about teacher appreciation. I want to, and I'm going to say something about this at the end of my slide, so I just have to make sure I'm in total control of what I'm going to share with you at the end. But want to be very clear, the teacher appreciation was May 2nd, not May 3rd. So, Teacher Appreciation Day is different than when Teacher Appreciation Week happens, and I'm going to talk about that, because Teacher Appreciation Week starts next week. Teacher Appreciation Day was Tuesday. The Professional Learning Safety was on May 3rd. So, we want to thank all the educators, the paraeducators, the staff for their hard work and dedication to Waterbury Public Schools. And in addition to the letter that we sent out to them on May 2nd, which was Teacher Appreciation Day, we want to also make certain that they're going to get some goodies and some treats next week on behalf of all of us. Staff, well, I just said it, so I should say, I never stick to the script. Administrative Assistance Day was on April 26th, and we recognize and the important contribution of all of our administrative support staff, our paraprofessionals. They make our work easier each and every day, and we are so grateful, and we're thanking them publicly tonight, but we also sent out some thanks and appreciation on the actual day of April 26th. As an update, which is not included on the slides, I will be having a follow-up meeting with the parents at Maloney Elementary School, Maloney Inter-District Magnet, because as previously submitted in memo, St. Anne's will not be available to Waterbury Public Schools. So, I want to have that face-to-face meeting with our parents to notify them and to also share with them some of the options that will be available for them for the '23, '24 school year. We will be offering 6th grade at Maloney. I want to share that with parents so that they could make the right decision for their children, and at this time, they will not be able to make future plans for 7th and 8th grade because that is no longer an option for us at this time. We also want to make certain that parents are well-informed with some of the options throughout the district and that they can make the right decision for their children moving forward. I anticipate that the actual meeting will be next week, but they will be receiving written notification before that. I think it's only fair that parents know in advance. We're coming into the very busy season and one of the most exciting parts of the year, where we, we will begin celebrating students during all kinds of activities. I'm very happy that all of those will be back in person again. We will send schedules out to the board members that you will know when this occurs, and just like you always have been, someone's always there to support. We want to make certain that you know what these activities are going to be for the remainder of May, and of course, for June. Our graduation schedules have been set out. We hope that everybody is making plans. I don't believe we're going to have any more inclement days, so we are ready and set for that. We did conduct the safety meeting yesterday, and for that, I, I, we were able to get the majority of our teachers and administrators into Crosby High School. And I do want to say, typically, I do not make any comments during anyone's statement, during public comments, but I am going to do that right now. And here's what I have to say about that. We needed to have a meeting. There is nothing more important to all of us than safety, and we needed to inform our staff of all of the resources that we have and of the memorandum of understanding that we have with the police department and ways that we are not only trying to significantly reduce the number of arrests that we have in Waterbury Public Schools, but what we want to do to help change the behaviors throughout all of the district, which is going to take a concerted effort on everyone's part. It's one thing to criticize because we had a professional development day and had everybody at one site. You can criticize that, but the better way is to provide us with some options where you think that you could have done a better job. So, the safety plans, safety is just that. It's safety, because we take it very seriously for our students and for our staff. A plan cannot be safe if you're going to publicize it for everyone, step by step, every single thing that you do. But we do have a student code of conduct, and the student code of conduct is up to date, and it is on our website, and it is the guide that helps principals decide what the consequences will be when the police are not involved. Police are not substitutes for administrators or for teachers, and we wanted to make that very clear, and I believe we have done that and we will continue to do that. Every school in Waterbury Public Schools has a safety plan. Every school in the district, and it is individual to their unique campuses, because all campuses have different entrance and exits and security doors, all of those things. That is meant for the principal of the school to have a detailed conversation with their crisis team, as well as other members of their school, to know exactly what those safety measures are so that it can remain safe, not something that you put out publicly for scrutiny, because you can't provide safety if you're putting those kinds of documents out publicly. And so, I, I can say with confidence that the schools have those plans. They're also reviewed by our Director of Safety in schools, and he does an excellent job. It is a tough job. We all need to play in this together and, and join hands for the safety of our children and our parents, but I want to assure you that every school has a safety plan. We also practice, and there are opportunities for everybody to ask questions directly to me or to our staff, and I'm always available if someone has recommendations as to what we can do specifically to make our district better, and then I can bring that to the board so we can have a discussion and make any other decisions that we might need moving forward. But I wanted to clarify that, because we did not take away Teacher Appreciation Day. Teacher Appreciation Day was the second, not the third, and the Professional Learning was the third. And that concludes my comments.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Ruffin?
Those are the comments.
Anyone else? Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda, Committee on Building and School Facilities, Use of School Facilities by School Organizations and/or City Departments. Mr. Albini, welcome back.
Thank you. Greetings once again. With the approval of the Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the use of school facilities at no charge to the eight school organizations and/or city departments that are in your packets. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Nope. Okay. All right, next one is Superintendent's Notification to the Board. Any questions on the Superintendent's Notification to the Board? You can always tell when it's the end of the year, because this gets real long. Any questions, anyone? All right. And we do not need an executive session tonight, so motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
The superintendent is going to speak, or?
At the regular meeting, they give their report at the regular meeting.
I'm sorry.
Yep. And they were like, "Poor napkin."
Sorry.
He just tried to throw y'all under the bus.
Okay. All right, so-
Make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. We are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
They were here all night.
Get out of here safely.[1655.47]